Good evening and welcome to the Tuxbury Board of Select meeting of September 16th. Could we all please stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay. Mr. Krappman is running. A little lady should be here any minute. First item on the agenda is the Trahan reuse presentation. Is there someone here for that? Okay, Mark, if you can come up and sit down, introduce yourself with your name and address for the record.
Do you want to use it? Do you have an easel?
One over there.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Twelve, mine around.
Hi. My name is Mark O'Hagan from MCO and Associates. I reside in Bolton at 50 Snow. What is my address now? 35 Fox Run Road with offices in Harvard, Mass.
All right. Thank you. You're here to present us a development for the Trahan School redevelopment. So we're going to turn the floor over to you and you can walk us through your presentation.
Terrific. I'll give you a little background on myself first. I've been developing pretty much affordable housing exclusively for probably the last 30, 35 years, up and down 495, with a particular focus on smaller, mid-sized communities, suburban areas, a lot of challenging sites with limited infrastructure. My whole background has really been based on collaboration with communities. I really look at them as being the host community and a partner in the development. Really haven't spent any time at the HAC on fighting towns for projects. So working with towns, it's important to me and it's really been the basis of my career. Give you a quick overview of the property of what we're looking at, then I can talk with some specifics. I did have the benefit of, I didn't see the previous proposal, but I did see the hearing or the meeting with the other ones. So I did get a sense of some of the enthusiasm for what you saw there. So I will probably make some comparisons between what they were doing and what's here. They're really two very different projects. They were a really good group. They do a great job. If that's what you decide to go with, it's certainly a good group. But my, I guess, vision, which is based as much on my background, is very different than what they had. When I initially looked at the site, I looked at that school and I think I heard that somebody made reference to it. I went to that school. It was actually in Chumsford, but that school has been built all over Merrimack Valley in the 60s and 70s. So it's very consistent with it, the neighborhood that's there. I walked to school, you know, from homes that were 1,000, 1,500 square feet, modest areas. So very similar to what's there. And when I see the school, I candidly, it doesn't strike me as a school that was really worth saving. Architecturally, I didn't think it was overly dramatic. There are lots of samples of it. I think that was some initial sentiments that some of the board had when I saw with some of your conversations. Again, they're looking at it. I didn't see their, you know, their full architectural package and I'm sure they've got some wonderful pictures of what it could be. But it is an older school and in three or four years, when they could get started, it's going to be even more older and need some additional work. So I'll start flipping through these. Again, I forgot that we had it. So just a little background for myself. I've done probably 30, 40Bs or comprehensive permits with a whole range of communities. The site, as I said, I didn't look at it as a school that was generally worth saving. In some preliminary conversations that I had with Alex, I think she had reached out to me because she had some information on a cottage rental product that I was doing in another community that I'll have some imaging on that we can talk about. So that was kind of the initial basis of it. There were some conversations also about some elderly housing and so I tried to incorporate the two. So we've got a total of 25 one-bedroom elderly apartments in the front building, which is here, which we have the senior apartments. And then looped around the back is 32 detached cottages that are intended to be for rent. So these are cottages that I am building in another community. The cottages are very modest in size. They're about 1,150 to 1,400 square feet, two to three bedrooms, really kind of cute designs, front porches. I'll go through that as we go for it, as we go through the proposal. Other aspects that were advised of being important was to maintain playground areas, some common space that can be utilized for the public, which we have focused on up here. We designated, we showed basketball or playground, but really to designate the area specifically what would go there is certainly something that would be a conversation with the community of what was the best fit. Other aspects that we focused on was trying to maintain the buffer around the property. So the senior apartment, which is a two-story building, we pulled away from the property line a little bit with parking in between so it wouldn't impact neighbors. Again, on the backside, you know, we designed it to maintain the vegetation that was there. On the far end that ties into Madeline, we proposed this as just an emergency access, not a straight throughway. And we put, again, parking behind the buildings to provide even more separation from the other residences, even though I think Lower Road looks like it's a paper street and there's a nice sized buffer there. So we've incorporated Village Green and gazebo to have meeting spaces for the residents as well as more, you know, public space. We've got nice looping aspects for what can be for the senior housing and for public usage, providing parking, easy way to get in and out to provide a reasonable flow. Walking pass, as we said, around the perimeter of the property that can be utilized both for the public, elderly housing and as well as the residents. And overall, just a reasonable flow. We've got ample parking throughout the site that's located in the areas of the homes. So it should provide a reasonable fit for everybody that is there. With this program, we also targeted to have a minimal investment from the town. Conversations in conjunction with Alex were really, the town was providing the land on a long-term lease and there was an intention to take down the building. I know there was an estimate for, I don't know, $2 million or something, which seemed extremely high, but if that was done privately, I think that number would be a lot more reasonable. Yeah. And so my goal was to try to keep that value down. This is a mixed income project, obviously. We've got 25% affordability for the cottages at 80% of the median. For the elderly housing, we have them at 50% of the median to keep the overall cost down. The elderly rentals are intended to be pretty modest in size, somewhat consistent with some of the aspects of the other development in terms of space. It's 600 to 700 square feet. I think the average is about 657. Nice, simple living for singles, couples perhaps, has some common space for meetings, could be used for common space for public as well. So some similar aspects to that in terms of the sizing and what would be available to the people as they go through it. So I'll jump down to the products. This is a rendering of the 25-unit apartment building that we would be proposing, really kind of a broad, wide front porch that would be facing the green here with parking behind it. Again, it's only a two-story building. It's a relatively modest scale. I know over in front of the property over here, there's a four-story building, which is, it's oppressive in the area. It's big. So this, we've kept it at two stories with a relatively low-style roof to be usable for everybody, really split the units between the first floor and the second floor. Again, they're about 650 square feet with some common space. The floor plan's here, but, you know, pretty standard for elderly housing and I think pretty consistent with some of the other items that you had seen. But common space, you know, nice lobby and common space on the first floor, second floor common space as well for people's benefit, and really the nice big front porch, which is a significant aspect of the design. For the cottages, as we had said, we've got a, there's 32 that we had proposed. There's a mix of two and three bedrooms. We do have some designs for one-bedrooms, depending on what people are looking for. One thing that's nice about the range of homes that we have, we've got three styles, we've got, which I'll go through, but we have options that are suitable for people that may be older and need or want one level living. Three bedrooms have a first-floor master as well. So they're really designed to be able to accommodate a broad range of people. We've got front porches on all of them, really trying to encourage people out. We've got the green space that we've incorporated into the property to get people out and about. Again, we've got parking distributed through the property, so we don't have any parking lots that are overly large or overly oppressive, but we're able to keep parking close to the homes throughout the bulk of it as well. Design-wise, these are high-efficiency products. Again, I heard it in the meeting that was there. These are going to be all-electric. It's really almost what you need to do these days to comply with most of the standards. So they're extremely tight, well-constructed homes, so we try to keep the expenses down for people. But overall, from an environmental perspective, they're very tight, really anything that's being built these days are. From a rental perspective and the costs, as I said, for the elderly housing, we're looking at 50% of the median, so the rents for those units, the affordable units, would be below 1,200 square feet, based upon current incomes, you know, with the state formulas that they utilize and the allowances from the housing authority. I think $1,191 would be the cost, really, really affordable for people, which is terrific. For the market rate, the rents are generally like 1,900 and 2,000. I think it's 1,892 and 2,035 for the affordable rentals. Again, in today's market, remarkably affordable.
Yeah.
And even the market rate homes these days, you know, the rents will, you know, be from the low to mid-upper threes, but in today's environment, a two-bedroom box in a 200, you know, in a 200-square-foot property is 3,03200 today. So we're able to deliver these at a pretty affordable price compared to what you see for products that don't offer at all. You know, these homes are, it's three styles, so I'll give you a little more specifics. This is our two-bedroom cottage. It's one and a half baths, nice front porch. It's about 1,300 square feet. Floor plan's pretty straightforward, kitchen dining in the back, nice living room, laundry room, two bedrooms upstairs, both really comfortable from a design perspective. This is an actual structure that's built in Lancaster, so it looks remarkably like the picture. People are moving in. Porches make it really nice and keep people a part of the community. The bungalow that we have, this is all one level. It's about 1,150 square feet. Nice open floor plan, again terrific for handicap individuals, older individuals that don't want to deal with stairs. Two bedrooms, two bathrooms. The living space on this is really, it feels like a larger home. All of these, these feel like a single-family home. We've got nine-foot ceilings. We've got full-size windows. The finishes are very nice. We've got a couple of pictures for interior stuff that I'll show you. Again, here's a family that recently moved into the homes. This is constructed at the property down in Lancaster that I had discussed. There we go. Little help? Oh. So the next image was really going to be of the three-bedroom. That's about 1,400 square feet, master on the first floor, nice living spaces and a couple additional bedrooms on the upper floor. And again, these homes are, they're pretty consistent size-wise to that neighborhood. You know, it's a neighborhood of older homes that were probably built around the time of the school. So we're a little denser than what they are, but these aren't large homes that we're trying to put into tight areas. So we can wait for that. We can talk a little bit more about the site plan per se and the concept from a design. And a lot of the housing that I do, I don't look at it. I try to design homes and communities that reflect the broad community that lives there. So that's why having the senior apartments, having the detached cottages, it really hits everybody that lives in town as compared to one community. We can have young kids. We can have families. We can have, you know, their grandparents and other communities. In the designs, with the front porches, with the walkways, people, they're out and about, they're chatting, they're having interactions, and it is... And they get that interaction from one group to another, which I think is beneficial for everybody that's living. Having the public space up front, having a little more private space in the back, I think will work for the residents to have the people that are living there and making it a neighborhood that's more reflective of the town.
I think so.
Here we go. So we'll go through these quickly. This is the three-bedroom cottage, some similar detailing, front porches, mix of details on the outside. First floor, again, big open kitchen, living, dining area, a little kind of pocket study that we utilize, master bedroom on the first, other bedrooms on the second. These are some interiors from the homes, from the model that we have down in the other site. Again, nine-foot ceilings, you know, detailed molding, nice light fixtures, quartz countertops in the kitchen, stainless steel appliances, wood floors, really a home that doesn't feel like an apartment. It really, truly feels like a single-family home. So back to the site plan from an overall design perspective. Was advised that the privacy of the neighbors was important, so we pulled the homes in, pulled the larger buildings away from the property line as we had talked about, pulled these back to maintain the vegetation that's there. I think I had heard on the other one, the site does drop down a couple of feet that will aid to it, will maintain a perimeter path around the end with the emergency access and having that mix of people out and about and enjoying the site overall. Parking-wise, what we used from a design perspective was one and a half for the senior apartments in terms of spaces available, two spaces for each of the cottages, and then we've got, I think, an extra 26 to 30 spaces that can be for public usage of the playground, visitor usage throughout the site. Should provide enough parking for people in their everyday life and even, you know, dealing with other, you know, holidays and things that will happen. This is proposed through the 40B process. I know the town's familiar with it. You had talked about it with the other project. One of the advantages here as compared to the other site, that this can move forward now, not waiting on whether or not somebody else will provide funding, can get the support. I think they outlined from a best-case perspective, it could be two or three years before they could get started. Here, you know, we really have the materials that we would need to put together the LIP application that would be submitted to the town. We outlined some timeframes within the proposal that I don't need to go through specifically, but this is what my firm, this is what we do for a living. Everybody that's on the project team, we've done multiple projects together. We would have the application put together for submission to the town quickly, as soon as we get the communications back from the town, I mean, from the state, we'd be back meeting with the ZBA. So generally, from start to finish here, we could probably be permitted in, you know, 14 to 16 months, depending on how quickly the ZBA worked, how quickly DHCD worked, but that's a reasonable timeframe. Again, a lot of the information that we have available because we've used it at other sites, and I think that, you know, the timing would be important. A couple of other things to consider as it relates for the new versus the, and I look at it from a new build versus the retro of the old building, are the economics redoing the old building substantially more expensive? You know, I think they had talked about a budget that was roughly $20 million for 46 units with $4.5 to $5 million from a town's budget. You're looking at $435,000 per unit for roughly 650 square-foot homes. That's based on the budget, on the information that I heard. It's a lot of money and a sizable amount of that is coming from the town. Here, we're looking at 57 units, substantially more square footage if we look at it from that perspective, but on average, these homes are at $320,000 per unit, so $100,000 less plus per unit, and it's a lot more square footage. The average square footage, taking the senior housing in conjunction with the cottages, were about 1,020 square feet or so. These being, you know, the 1,100 to 1,400, these being about 650. So, and that 320 price, that includes what was on my pro forma of about 16 to 50, plus I added in roughly $2 million, which I still think is high from a demo, but that includes that value, trying to get in apples-to-apples basis because they wouldn't be tearing it down. Their budget includes that work. So from apples-to-apples, you're looking at 320 to 435 for a much more substantial product, much more being built. From a square-foot perspective, you're looking at $665 per square foot to renovate that building versus the new cost for construction all-in of about 316. So it's half the price to get a brand-new community than retrofitting an older building that, it really looks like it's in terrible shape, and in three years, I think it's going to be in a lot worse shape. So those numbers, I just, I think you want to be mindful of that. You know, the other thing that I had heard about it is they were talking about, you know, of that money, that there's about $500,000 that would need to be spent on design, and it seemed as though that might be coming from the community, you know, which is interesting. But here, there's no risk capital from the community. So I design it, I engineer it, I get it approved, I go through the entire process. So the funding that we've requested from the town as part of the application is, again, just give me a clean, flat site, let me do the work. You know, we talked about, you know, aspects to the playground that would be public. Town can decide what they want to do. We'd have things prepped up if you want specific things there that can be done with the town. The only other thing that I included is if we wanted an elevator in the senior apartments, a couple of bucks for that. But for the most part, we get a budget for the demolition and then it's a privately-funded project from soup to nuts, and that's all funded by us, so no risk to the town, no waiting, no waiting to see what happens with it, which I think is a significant difference. And again, those budget numbers that I gave you includes up to $2 million for it. I think it'll be less. So I think that square-foot price, that unit price, you know, is closer to $300,000 for these cottages versus the other one. So I, you know, and a lot of that money, again, is coming from the town. From a practical sense, here, we do have more product. I heard concerns about density, and that's certainly something that can be looked at. You know, trying to do a rental, people like to get more units because they all count, whereas housing, it's different. So here, there's 57 units, again, total, they'd all go to your SHI. I think you're about nine now. This would get you at about nine and a half, thereabouts. And certainly for the affordable units, there'd be 70% preference. I also have a marketing, affordable marketing firm, so we do the lottery, the house and all of that. If the town wanted to make additional investments here, that could be used to provide more affordability. The other project did have more units that were affordable because of the level of subsidies that they're getting between the town, between the state. If the decision was, hey, we think we'd like to go new, we think we'd like to get more affordable units, we're willing to invest in it, I think it would be pretty simple to figure out a formula that X of amount of additional involvement can be more units at 50% if that's what you wanted, or more units at 80%. So it provides, I think, a little more options, a little more flexibility to try to target in on exactly what the town wants. What's hard when you do an RFP is you don't really know what you want, and I got into this late, so I didn't have any of the benefits of the earlier meetings, but it's still difficult to try to pinpoint exactly what a town wants when you've got a completely blank slate. If there was a decision that you wanted senior apartments, we could look at, you know, doing, you know, two buildings on a much smaller area, keeping more open space, having parking around the edges, you know, nice green space in the middle and then a public park up front. So again, if it's essentially a blank slate, we can do a lot of different things. So whether it's me or whether it's somebody else, I think, you know, renovating the building seems really expensive for a structure that just doesn't seem overly exciting. That's a personal opinion. But if you want to go new, you can really do what you want, tailor it that you want. You'll have a really good sense of what you're getting for value and can make those decisions of what you may want to invest or what you don't want to invest. So I've got a couple of other things that just is a little bit of, well, let's see if we can get it back. Just to show a couple of different things that I've done and how we've got there. So where are we? That's the site. There we go. This is the site that I think Alex had heard about. This is in Lancaster, Mass. It was a site, it was approved as a for-sale 40B with the roadway was installed. Somehow in this economic environment, they lost it. So I had acquired it from the bank, so the layout was a little bit more limited of what we could do with the roadway. But here, we did the same. This is 32 homes, big community green in the center. We kind of, you know, pushed some of the properties back. We've got a mix of parking in parking lots as well as along the street, and some of the homes, we've got some private backyards. This is the site. We're about 90% complete at this point, just finishing things up. The majority of the homes are rented, so things are moving along really well. It's been a nice relationship with the town. Here, again, an image that you saw of the homes. These are constructed and being completed. This is a large project I'm doing in conjunction with the town of Stowe. Stowe Acres is a golf course, there's 36 holes there. The town was concerned about the whole thing being developed into, you know, 150 lots of conventional housing, of just a bunch of, you know, big colonials. So really, over about a three-year period, we've worked with the town, with the golf course owner and myself and some planning groups, and really developed the concept to target the housing in one location. Again, here, you see some of the same things. I've got 124 single-family homes. I've got one building that's the same as we have here for 25 units, as well as some cottages, again, to kind of reflect the broad range of the community. What's neat about this is that with this, the town actually acquired a conservation restriction on one of the golf courses. They're acquiring the remainder of this side of the golf course and driving range. So there'll be, you know, we've clustered the housing here and there'll be about 250 acres that will remain as open space really in perpetuity under town ownership and under the conservation restriction. So this, we've recently got the permits on. We should be starting that next year. Really close relationship with the town. Another cottage site that I'm doing in Dunstable was actually selected through an RFP. Oddly enough, there was an RFP on this same site in 2006 that I had looked at. Nothing ever happened and now it comes back around. So again, cottage rentals, similar product, open space focus, some variety of parking, walking paths and trails with access to upon there from a design perspective. This is just another one. Again, this is in Bolton. These were actually condominiums, so the homes were a little bigger, but again, the focus of trying to make it more pedestrian-focused, keeping the vehicles on the outside and trails and such to connect the different homes and an aerial here. This was completed about three years ago. So these are bigger homes, but still just a sense of some information, some background. So quick summary, again, community, 57 affordable rental homes utilizing the cottage rentals, which is kind of a unique design. Really, you're starting to see some people wanting to do it. I've been getting more calls on it for communities just because I think people find this more palatable than this. I don't know if those are rentals or condominiums, to be honest with you. But much more lower scale, much more fitting with the community, much more pedestrian-focused, getting people out, walking around with front porches, chatting with their neighbors, et cetera. All homes will count towards your SHI, which we talked about, the local preference, you're going to get the maximum for the support that you're doing. Again, another significant thing when comparing... Again, another significant thing, when comparing it to the other alternative, this can go now. You don't have to wait and hope that you get support. Again, I know it's, it's a very different business than what I do. In, in the little amount that I've done with, towns with more resources seem to move down the list as compared to move up the list. So, something to keep in mind. Buffers to the neighborhood, walking path that we've talked about. Again, the density, it, it can be reviewed, we can work on it. Doing an RFP, you're running blind to a certain extent. We'd like to show what we think can fit, and be comfortable, and be attractive, but that can certainly be modified if needed. Again, the costs and benefits of the sixty-two-plus versus the family housing. We've taken more of a balanced approach, as again, we, we think it, it, it does reflect the overall community. A, a couple of things that I, I did look at, and the, the need for senior apartments, it's, it's obvious, it's everywhere. But the need for affordable rentals is, is, is obvious, too. I, I looked up for-sales in the town of what sold in Tuxbury over the last six months for single-family homes. It was a hundred and thirty-three transactions. The list price was seven twelve and change. The sales price was seven forty-two and change. So, for anybody to get into a home in town, looking at it on average, you're looking at, even with a five percent down payment, they need fifty thousand bucks between your down payment, closing costs, income of probably two hundred and twenty-five thousand on the basis of traditional underwriting, and you're still looking at a, at a six thousand dollar a month rent. So, we're, we're peers, I've got kids that are coming out of college, it's really challenging for them. So, for people that, that wanna stay in town, to have a place that is their own, that can feel like a home, that they can be here for an extended time, and hopefully use that time to be able to save up or find an opportunity to live elsewhere, to live in town, is, I think, important. So, again, certainly, there's a need for seniors, there's, there's a definite need for families and young people as well. For those numbers, to, to be mindful of it as part of your consideration. What else we got? Limited funding from the community, as we said. We take down the school, we're pretty much happy. We can talk about a couple of perks within the buildings, if that's something that the town wants to support. As I had said, you want to provide additional resources, we can use those subsidies to make them less expensive, or provide more affordability. Cost benefits, new versus retrofit, you're getting a lot more for your money here. And again, the focus is on the, the broad range of constituents as compared to just elderly. That's certainly, that's a decision for, for you of where you wanna put your resources. We can certainly work either way. We started with a balanced approach, but can certainly shift other ways if need be. And that is about it.
All right, thank you for that. That's very intense, there's a lot of information gathered.
There is a lot of information.
A lot to digest.
Yeah.
I'm gonna open up to the board, and we'll start with Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I liked the presentation. You know, it's interesting, two different, you know, perspectives on what can go on that site.
Very different, yeah.
Just a, a bit concerned in relocating the playground up towards the busy street, you know, that's a fairly new playground in the site, and I know that was a concern of the residents in that area.
Okay.
But I think that could be, potentially be altered.
Because that's, that's right here now, right?
Yes, and then, obviously, putting a basketball court right next to senior housing is always a concern.
It's basketball, just a placeholder. I know they had pickleball on the other ones, yeah.
Exactly.
And I wasn't gonna go to pickleball, I've been in those conversations and other times, so.
Again, I, I like the, the idea. I think it'd be, it could be tweaked. I like the fact that it's just a cost of the demolition, you know, versus a larger share of our affordable housing dollars. And there's the potential of increasing our contribution to be able to increase
If that's a decision.
That number. Be very flexible, we really have to look at, you know, that dollar-for-dollar, seeing what the best benefit for the town is.
Sure.
But I appreciate your presentation, thank you.
As well.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, for coming this evening. I, I loved your presentation. I have been, and I think I prefaced my comments previously, that I didn't want anything going on the Trahan site because I wanted the open space to be preserved. So, I'm, I was encouraged by Mr. Hattersley's proposal, I'm very encouraged by your proposal as well. I think, I love the mix of families and senior housing. We desperately need family housing in this community, particularly, I think you bring an innovative view. I think this is the missing middle that we talk about in housing with the, the cottage court concept, and I think you've done it beautifully, adapted to this site. I concur with Mr. Ryder, I, with, you know, some of the elements, but that's all minutia. I, I feel that you've used the open space on there to the spirit that I was looking for, and kinda brought it a little forward, made it a little bit more accessible to the, the nearby residents, as well as the residents of that community, and having it be something that the community could enjoy, that, that already lives there. And, because it's something that could, and it would be enhanced a bit from, from what is there. I think that you had, you briefly touched on density, density's always a concern.
Sure.
I think this is, this is well-done, particularly because the scale of it is much smaller, there isn't the massing on the perimeter that the other project had, that I think some of the abutters would have a concern with, with that three-story parcel piece in, in the back. I think this is, you know, it, it sits nicely on the parcel, and I, I don't think would be visually intimidating from the street, if, if that makes sense. I appreciate that it's all rental, I, and that we have that toward our SHI. I think that the numbers that you're, you're giving us for what you anticipate the rents to be are very encouraging. I also have a, a son who's out of college, gainfully employed, doing very well, living at home, which is great, he's fantastic, you know, love that, love independence for, for the young people.
Yeah.
And I have a daughter who's graduating soon from college as well, so I'm, I'm right with you, and I, I really
I'm twenty-four and twenty-one, so, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-five and twenty-one. So, I'm, I'm right with you. So, I also appreciate that the financing approach is different, has a different model. But, the alacrity with which we could bring this forward, I think, is encouraging in this way. And I do like the idea of us being able to buy down some of the rents in perpetuity to accomplish a, a, you know, maybe a seventy percent AMI or something like that on some of these
Or, or more units, and I think that would, yeah, I mean, I, I think, given the option, I'd probably try to add more
More units.
As compared to
Sure.
Dropping it a hundred bucks, that, but that's
Yeah, and that, yeah.
Those are differences, and I think that stuff, that the town could really think about it, have a thoughtful decision of, of how much money you, you may wanna utilize. What I could do is tell you, if you decided you wanted to invest X amount of additional dollars, how that would relate to reductions, and how much, whether it was, it would save this much on a, a monthly basis, that we can distribute over five units or ten units.
Sure.
I think it would provide that kind of flexibility for the benefit of the board, and for the community to decide, but yeah.
No, I, I think so. So, I, I really appreciate you bringing this forward, and I, and I'm very excited about it, and I, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but this, this is excellent work, and I'm, I'm glad you're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you for coming out, I'm glad we're able to get you on the schedule, because when I first heard about this, initially, when these discussions started, I was looking for, in my mind, single-story, elderly, handicap-accessible kind of two families, that this kinda knocked it out of the park.
Yeah.
So, for me, this was, when I saw the initial concept, I was, wanted to hear more, and I still wanna hear more.
Great.
I appreciate that, the flexibility that this has, I mean, I have some questions and concerns, I, I won't belabor the point right now, because I don't believe in anything that's insurmountable. Some of those have been raised, like having the court so close to the road, things like that. But, because you're not reusing the existing building, there's a lot more flexibility to, to move some of those things around. I, too, like, I'm going to echo the sentiment of my peers, and say I would like to understand what that math looks like for either, you know, changing the number of units, or changing the AMI on those units, but love the concept. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna withhold my, my question, so I don't open a can of worms and, and start diving into little tweaks around the property.
I like worms, I like weeds, so whenever you're ready.
No, it's, again, it's a number of kinda just small things, like
Sure.
Potentially moving the senior housing, so it's not on the road, but I think that's a follow-on discussion. But I am, I'm a very much in fan
Yeah, yeah.
Very much a fan of the concept.
The, the thinking of, of, we, we had, you know, a half a dozen scenarios, and, and really, we only had about three weeks to put it together, so. It, we went through a lot, Peter is terrific, we've done a number of projects, so we, we can work through a, a bunch of different options. We, we ended with it up in the front, because what I was hearing was the concern about the neighborhood. It, it, it is not a large building, in the scheme of things, à la this alternative, but it's still certainly a bigger profile than the cottages. So, putting it up front, we, we thought that it was better. And, and again, the basketball court is there. What, what I found in a lot of, you know, meetings with different people, that, people in senior housing, they love seeing the kids out and about. And that's why we've got a big porch on the front of the house, and the, the project that you saw in Stowe, that we really designed it for, you know, that's where there's the big, you know, three-quarters of an acre of the community green, so we can have activities. They're close to it, they can spend time, they can, you know, if they don't, if they're not as ambulatory as they'd like to be, they can be sitting on the porch, they can see the activity, they can see, you know, people from eight to eighty out, walking around and interacting, and, and enjoying it. So, that's part of the reason why we moved it up the front. I mean, that, again, that being said, as, as you had said, there's, there's a lot of flexibility, since we have a blank slate, once the building comes down, we can do some things, and certainly work through different alternatives. But that, that was the thinking initially, that a lot of people that are in senior housing, they, they get lonely, that's why the porches are big, and they like the buzz, have more interaction, and a community that has kids and families and such. So, that was the thinking.
Absolutely. So, to summarize, I'm definitely interested in hearing more, love the concept, and would like to have follow-on discussion based on what my peers have to say. But that's all I have, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey, Mr. Kratman.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm not as enthusiastic as the rest of my colleagues here. I, I've been dealing with housing for many years, sitting on community development boards and seeing how places are built. I love the concept if it was in a different location. This location is, like, we just updated this location because of the traffic of what's going on there. Building all these, you know, two- and three-bedroom apartments brings more vehicles that goes through there. And having vehicles going through, and especially going past the senior housing development, you know, you're gonna have people going in and out of this place quite a bit of, the mixed use is nice if it was someplace else. The location is difficult, because the residents don't want the traffic there. And, and that's, and that's the thing that we rarely have been struggling with, of trying to find a place, and that's why I like the location as specifically senior housing, because it doesn't bring the additional traffic, it doesn't bring the, the, you know, the congestion. And, and if you've got two- and three-bedroom apartments, you're gonna have kids there. And so, where are these kids all gonna be? I mean, you, you, one of the things that I've sat and I've argued many times about building stuff in this community is using every inch of open space to develop something. And, yes, I see you got a basketball court, I see there's some land there, but you're gonna have a bunch of kids, that, like, and where are they all gonna be running around, and where are they gonna be playing, and where are they gonna be going, and, and then you just gotta deal with that traffic, and, and then have the, then you have the seniors there, and, you know, I know you say that the seniors like to have that, but they also want some peace and quiet, you know, and that's why usually you have a separation of some buffer. And there isn't much of a buffer here, where you're coming in and out. I mean, I can see people going in, flying into this driveway, trying to get to their houses, and then seniors coming out of their place, and cars coming past, past them, and you're, you're dealing with, I mean, I, I've seen so many developments where they're always complaining about, they got fifteen mile an hour speed limits, so don't fly through this area. And then you have areas where, you know, you're gonna have, there's not a lot for anybody to do around there. And so, you know, you have cars going in and out, it just, it's too condensed for me, it has too much traffic coming off the site for me. You know, like I said, if this was, it, it's, it's in the location, it's a difficult location because we just spent, you know, we did, that intersection that's right around the corner, not too long ago, was in the top sixtieth most dangerous intersections in the Massachusetts. We did, spent money, and we got the state to come in to reallocate and redo that intersection. The last thing I wanna do is bring more traffic coming flying out of there, while we just spent all that money to have that done, to make it a little bit safer. And then if you get the cars coming out, and then people are trying to get around it, and you got a fire station nearby, it's, it's just a lot to be going in there. The senior housing, it's, you don't get people going out at seven o'clock in the morning, going to work, and coming home at three-thirty in the afternoon to come home from work, and kids coming home from school, and all those other things that would be happening with the mixed use. And it's just, the congestion of it all worries me of what it is. Like I said, if, like, I saw all your other developments, I liked them, but, like, I didn't see very many of those that were built in an area where there's already, like, major traffic concerns. Like, I know where Stowe is, you know, and I, I played that course many times, I know where it is. The other places where you're talking about is rural areas, where you've had, like, you know, areas where, yeah, you can get cars in and out of what it is, but this is like, you go, you drive by here at two-thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon, and you can't get cars up and down that roadway.
I, I came by to take another look at the site before the meeting, and, you know, I think, I've been in the area since, you know, from four to five, and, and, and the whole main street is, is, is backed up.
Yeah.
This is, this is backed up.
Yeah.
It, it is, I, I'm certainly not gonna argue that it's a condensed area, but I, you know, I look at it from the sense that, A, it, it, it is an area that has a lot of life and a lot of activity now, and, and adding to it, I, isn't necessarily a bad thing, it's a, it, it's a living, breathing neighborhood. From a traffic perspective, that's why we, we tried to focus on having the two entrances, that, you know, one can be focused on for the senior apartments, we don't have it running right through that people would, would rush in and, and take off. This is more of your, your main entrance, to keep it away from this. And these days, I mean, traffic is, it, it, it's horrible everywhere. I do lots of traffic studies these days, they don't make any sense, because traffic, it's completely different than what it used to be five years ago. People aren't leaving at, some people do leave at seven, some people do come home at three, but people are coming and going all day long, at different times, that, that, that peak aspect, I, I just don't find it as being as critical as it was. School buses and kids, that's certainly the case. Here, just on the, on the unit mix, what, what we had, and again, it can be modified however the town wants, was, I think I had, like, only nine three-bedroom homes here, there was twenty, I think twenty-three two-bedrooms. We do have alternatives for one-bedroom design, too. So, if there's a concern with the number of, of children, that's obviously something that can be modified. At ten percent, would need to be three bedrooms per, you know, per state calcs, but otherwise, we could certainly make some adjustments. And I said, the overall density, it is, I, it, that's something that they can talk about, but I certainly, you know, respect your, respect your thoughts.
And I, and I take your, you know, you, you get, I've sat through many, many, many presentations where people say, peak hours aren't peak hours. Well, I, I know what peak hours are, because I, I go by them every day. And so, it's like, we know when the cars are there. I can see five thousand traffic studies that are gonna tell me it's not gonna be there, but then when I go out, and I stand on that corner, I, I don't, the traffic study, I can throw it out the window, because it doesn't, it doesn't really, it's not real.
That's mine, yeah.
So, I, I go by what's real, and I know what's there already. And this is, like I said, I, I understand that we need housing, and I agree, there's no one on this board that's gonna argue that we need more affordable housing. It's the location of where we're putting the affordable housing. And, you know, we have town land that we own, and for me to sit here and say, yes, I need more affordable housing, but I'm gonna make the area worse by bringing more traffic there, I just, I don't wanna sit in front of my residents and say, yes, I, I jammed in so many housings there because I had the land, but did it really make my community a better place? Yes, we got more housing, but, once again, I created this more traffic, and, and it just, and like I said, if it was in another location, I love your concept, it would be wonderful if it was off of, like I said, of 133 where you've got traffic that's moving, or if you had something that's off another area where we don't already have traffic concerns. But bringing that must congestion to an area that we all know is already congested, I think it worries me. So like I said, I love the presentation, it's something that we need, but does it really benefit my community enough to justify bringing that much more traffic to the area? And how does that, you know, how does that affect the neighbors? So they're already dealing with trying to get off those things, and then I'm gonna tell them I'm putting 57 more units of cars that, some were two- and three-bedroom apartments, so I could have a couple of hundred cars going in and out, it's just, you know, that's a lot to deal with. So the concept is lovely, the location to deal with it is very difficult, and that's my concern. But, thank you.
Sure. And I, it is denser, I tend to think that there's a lot of people there, and a few more people, it doesn't have as much of a negative impact, that people are here, they're closer to activities, they're closer to shopping, you put them out on the periphery, and it's the same thing, they're gonna be driving here no matter what. But it's a philosophy difference, and I certainly.
No, I get you, but see, this is, this is the conversation we have, it's like, this area doesn't make that much of a difference, but when you go two blocks down, they're building another area, and then they're building another area, and then they're building another area, and you put them all together, and it becomes Stooksbury's nightmare. And that's what the residents are ready to strangle us for. So that's, so I get that, like, this one, this one may not be it, but I know what's being built around it. And so it's just, when you put this with everything else that's already being built, it's too much for me, and that's my perspective. And like I said, I agree with everybody with the need, but it's just like I said, when we're building, it just, I gotta look what else is also being built around it. You're focused on a site, I'm focused on the area, and I know what else is being built around, and there's other locations that are also gonna bring more traffic to that area, and then we add it, and we add it, and we add it, and then there's no money coming to widen those areas anytime soon. So that's why when I'm looking at something, I was more focused for senior housing on the site, because I don't think it would bring as much traffic to the thing, and it would solve a problem. We need more family housing, nobody's denying it, the location is tough. And that's, and that's my perspective. I don't want to keep going over and over, but that's my concerns.
Yeah, and as I said, too, again, at the, at the will of the board, you know, if it was determined that only senior housing, what was necessary, you know, whether it was a different design, or two buildings that are located in the back with the center, there are alternatives that can, that can be done, that can try to, you know, split the baby, address the needs, still get some reasonable density, but not overwhelm the site if that's the feeling of the board in general. And then you're really looking at the, at a decision between, you know, what's a better use of the money, building new, or renovating something old, and running the risk of not having the resources to do it on top of it. So I certainly understand, all the board members are gonna have different opinions of what's perfect. This, you know, as even going over there, I was looking at some things that I would change on it, I did see the playground area, and, you know, there's aspects of it that if I look at it every day, I would change things, I keep tweaking it. So I certainly understand that this is a pretty picture, it's a piece of paper, and if the decision is to either continue having conversations, or that doing a new development is what you want, and it's something that we'd be working with, then I certainly can put together some different schematics with communications, whether it's with your board or housing partnerships or other entities that you, that you want me to work with. So I'm flexible, if nothing else, so.
Yes, Mr. Kratman?
I'm awesome.
Okay, thank you. I understand Mr. Kratman's concern about the traffic, but it was a school there, and there were school buses going in and out, there were 50 teachers going in and out, there were parents dropping off kids, but I do understand his concern. But like my other colleague stated, it is a very interesting concept. You know, I like the cost, and I like not waiting for grants. And it's the minimal investment from the town's housing trust fund, you know, whether we decide to invest it or not. I think this project, we should review it even more, and there's also tax revenue involved, you know, property tax, where maybe the other one doesn't have property tax. But I would like to see if we can digest a little bit more of this, and maybe have another meeting with the concerns of my colleagues. You know, so I'm gonna leave it up to the board. What would you like to proceed, or how would you like to proceed? Would you like to have another meeting? For more information, with questions we can provide the gentleman with before, so he can have different concepts, you know, whether you want to move the basketball court, or whether you want to move the parking lot?
I think some of the site design, and any sort of, that stuff is all, that can be worked out later, I don't know that that's the purview of the board, that might go through the planning process, you know, at that part. I'm curious about Mr. Montori's, where do we stand here with the RFPs, and, you know, do you have any recommendations?
So, you know, you've heard both proposals, we have information back from the first proposal on a proposed lease agreement. I think the board probably should just take both under advisement at the moment. I think you should schedule another meeting, maybe we can look at next Tuesday's agenda, or do a separate meeting just to discuss this, and then just discuss both together. Take some time to think about it. I'll get you any information from the previous proposal that I received today, and just digest it, and let's have another meeting to discuss it. I wouldn't make any decisions tonight.
Yeah, I think we had provided a lease agreement with the response that was modified from the Dunstal one, quite frankly, because that's a long-term lease as well.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's probably what we would, we would probably contact the applicant tomorrow and say, why don't you give us your proposed lease and proposed agreements, and then we can just meet, go over both.
Okay.
Similar sentiment, Mr. Chairman. I think there were lessons learned from last time, where we received a presentation, and then when we got a proposal, there was some delta to what was discussed. So I would very much like to make a similar motion to last time, to authorize Mr. Montori to encase in those discussions, get a little more information, and then we can, you know, once we have the full picture, get on a future agenda.
Motion made by Mr. Mackey?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
And Mr. Montori, can we put them on the agenda for our next meeting?
We'll do that.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way that we can get the proposals up on our website, so that residents that are interested would be able to review the proposals that we, so this way they can see, like, both proposals?
I agree.
In this way, that if they're on our planning, or whatever part of our website, the residents can review, and this way maybe we'll have some active residents that live in the area, or people that have things, can come in, and they can have their voice heard as well.
I mean, through, Mr. Chair, again, I was gonna, a similar concept, you know, put these on the website, let people digest them, and know it's on for the next agenda, both can come in, or butters can come in and ask questions, raise their concerns, and, you know, hear from them, how, what they want to see of the site. They've lived through the school for all these years, you know, listen to what they would like to see, you know? They know something's going to go there, so let's get some input from the residents, and whether it be a resident that lives there, or a resident that commutes through there, listen to their concerns.
We'll down them up tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We've managed to build an elementary school, and we still haven't figured out what we're doing with these sites, so moving it quickly, moving it forward, I think, is good, and it's taken a while, the staff have done a good job putting this, these RFPs on the street several times, so we're in a good position, and I think it'll be good to get this moving forward, so thank you.
I know that you've got, again, you've got two really distinct proposals, they are a very good group, hopefully, if you look into my background, you'll find we're a good group as well, so whatever that works for the board, I'm certainly happy to do.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's well appreciated. Trust me.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into our next thing, can we take a two-minute break while they're breaking stuff?
Okay, taking a two-minute recess.